Good morning. Good morning. We'd like to welcome everybody to our Mesa City Council study session for the morning of Thursday, February the 9th. All of our council is very present today.
I thought this was what we were doing.
It is. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I've got a Kevin Durant jersey on underneath. I was gonna reveal later, but maybe not. The best tweet I saw this morning is all of a sudden everyone's forgotten there's a football game because of the Kevin Durant story. We haven't forgotten, though. Well, it is a fun and exciting time. Lots going on, including a full agenda for our meeting today. Item one on our agenda is to review our agenda for our Monday night meeting, February the 13th, so let's go to that. Mr. Britti, I know you said item 6C, having to do with our libraries, is something that the staff is ready to explain to us, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we just kick it off by hearing from that? Polly, thank you. Welcome, Polly.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here this morning. Just want to make sure I can get these slides. Let's see here. Oops. I do this every time, every time. Thank you. Thank you, Jesse. Good morning. My name is Polly Bonnet, and I am here to talk about the Library Card Initiative program we have. I am the library director. I'm so excited to share this new pilot project with you today. Before we get started, I wanted to talk a little bit about our goals, but the history of our relationship with Mesa Public Schools as far as it relates to our library card campaigns. So in 2015, as part of a national initiative, libraries were encouraged to partner with schools and teachers to focus on kindergarten library card procurement and campaigns. And part of that was because data at the time was showing that kindergarteners who attended school during the year and had access to public libraries achieved higher in math, science, and reading during the third grade year. And as you know, third grade is critical when it comes to academic achievement. So at that time in 2015, we started working with Mesa Public Schools to focus on what we called the Kinder Card Campaign. That was also tied to our Mesa K Ready program as well. So from that program, it was very successful, but we had limitations because we only had so many staff members who were able to reach the 57 elementary schools that are in Mesa Public Schools. So enter 2022, and we have staff who thought, you know, we can do this more efficiently, and we can do this more creatively and reach more students. So we reached out to Mesa Public Schools and talked about how we could streamline this process, not just for kindergarteners, but for all ages. But we wanted to first start with this grade as a pilot project to make sure that we could do this well. And one of the goals, one of the major goals of this project is that we'll reach more schools, we'll reach more students, and then we can expand support to the schools and also to our students. And we also want to provide opportunity to all Mesa students equally. So you can see here, this is a map of our library locations. Those are noted with the book there in Mesa Public Schools. Because I'm not able to zoom in, this is just a screenshot of the map. It's not showing all of the schools, but it is 87 Mesa Public Schools that we're working with, or I'm sorry, 82, and then the 57 elementary schools. This map does not include charter schools or schools that are in Mesa that are in different school districts. So how it's divided there is we placed service districts, I guess, near our physical locations. So the green there, Node Stops and Ranch. The purple is the main library service district, and then the red is the Red Mountain Service District. And with all this, the number of schools that we have to serve with our three physical locations, it can be a challenge, and that's one reason we wanted to see how we could more efficiently work with the schools to get library cards to all students. And that's why this program was born. So this IGA, what we aim to do is to automate the library card registration process as part of when students register in Mesa Public Schools, parents or guardians can opt in to select a Mesa library card for their students. This also gives permission to share data between our two entities and make sure we're on the same page with what our goals are. And then it strengthens our collaboration and partnership with Mesa Public Schools, which has been strong for decades. We have librarians who are out in the schools doing programs and visiting for Read Under the Stars and Parent Teacher Nights, but this allows us to strengthen that relationship. And then it also increases opportunity and awareness for our services to all of our students throughout Mesa. So what is the process? As I mentioned, just briefly, you are able to opt in during the registration process for students. The nice thing about this is in our prior campaigns, it was a point-in-time program where it was annual, so we were only able to do this once a year with students. As part of the registration process for schools, this is a year-round process, so no matter when you register for schools, you have the opportunity to register for a library card. This also ensures that data is sent securely between the library administration and school administration, and that is part of the automated process, so it just populates our software that we use at the library, and all that we have to do is generate the card and send that out to students. And then they have access to all of our resources, which expands the access to the reading material, but also learning resources that they have at the schools. And then this last part here, our vision is dreaming starts here, and we know at the library, along with our educator partners, that if you have access to learning resources, to reading, that you can achieve big dreams, and you can dream big, and that's what we want to do as far as getting library cards into every student's hands.
Great.
Can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Polly. Councilmember Spillsbury.
Thank you so much. I'm super excited about this. On the Education Workforce Roundtable, we obviously have been talking a lot about literacy, and we're putting, you know, forward a new community literacy initiative soon, really partnering our whole community together, and so this is just perfect. I think this is going to fit into that perfectly and really help families get the resources that they need. Is there any plan to spread this to charter schools or anything like that?
Yes. So we are piloting just with this one grade kindergarten at the moment to make sure that if there is any improvements that need to be made, or as we evaluate the process, if we need to make any adjustments, we can. And then the plan is to roll it out to all grades and also to other schools that aren't part of Mesa Public Schools.
Okay, so sorry, so you're starting in the elementary, and then you'll eventually go to junior high, high school, is that what you were saying?
Right. Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, that is our plan at this time. We want to expand to all students in all grades.
And then would the plan eventually be to go to the schools that are in Gilbert Public Schools and Queen Creek and those?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, your district wasn't really included in that, was it?
I noticed that.
Right, we do have planned to reach out to students who are in Mesa, but they may be in Gilbert Public Schools or the Queen Creek Unified School District. But as this initial step and with our prior relationship with Mesa Public Schools, we wanted to see how we could roll it out there.
Does the Maricopa County Community Library District have a program like this for the schools that are in those district libraries?
Not that I'm aware of. I was speaking with other library directors in the valley, particularly the East Valley last week, and they do not do anything like this.
Okay, that's incredible. Thank you so much. I'm fully in support.
Great. Councilmember Summers.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Spillsbury has my back on this one. So, yeah, I think some of the other cities are covered by the county, right? They don't have their library systems?
Mayor and Councilmember Summers, the county does cover a large, well, they service areas that do not have their own municipal libraries. So Tempe, Chandler, Scottsdale do have their own library systems, municipal library systems that are funded independently from Maricopa County.
But Gilbert and Queen Creek?
Gilbert is part of Maricopa County Library District as well as Queen Creek. There are discussions, and I can't really speak to those because I'm not sure of all the details, but there have been discussions between Gilbert and the county about Gilbert taking on the services of their library. But that's been over the years, and I'm not sure where that stands.
Yeah, for anybody watching, there are folks like myself that, when you come from back east, a lot of times the city actually operates the school districts too, or at least they line up, right? So questions I get in my district a lot are related to Mesa Public Schools. I send them there, and they went, why am I in Mesa and I'm going to Gilbert Public Schools or Queen Creek Public Schools? They don't realize that they line up, but they are, those kids are part of our community. So we have two new libraries opening in the next couple of years in my district, which is huge. The Monterey Park yet to be named, Mesa Express Library, and then the other library that happens to be located in Eastmark that still is unnamed. But this might be an opportunity as you move this program, you expand this program to the different grades and the school districts to tie in with the library grand openings, at least the one down in Eastmark, because that's about two years out, to announce it maybe hand in hand with the library opening and the school districts to work together to expand this program down there. Because I would like to see this in my district as well for those kids. Thank you.
And Mayor, Councilmember Summers, we are happy to do that. We want to get library cards in every student's hands, so we can make that part of the messaging and as we open the new libraries, promote this program.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Haradia.
A question on, I know this is for the littles and kindergarten, right? And as we move forward, you know, your library card also has access to some online features, right? So for the older, noting that many folks, as they get older, they have laptops, right? Is there any talks on integrating some portal online? Because that will increase even further access than people, like kids not being able to go to adoption ranch or the main library or Red Mountain because of transportation, but could use online options to, for the eBooks or research. Has there been any discussion kind of linking up the online portals with the school district to utilize those functions from our resources at the library?
Mayor and Vice Mayor Haradia, that's a great point. We do still, outside of this program that we're releasing just for the kindergarteners right now, we do still visit the schools, and we do library card registrations for all ages, and we promote our digital resources. However, just this week, we did release an e-card option, and that's new for our library system, so that's open to anyone. It can be teenagers, but also adults, and you're able to apply for a library card that's just digital access by authenticating your address. And then you do have the option for a physical card as well, if you'd like to use the library for other services outside of the digital. And that just rolled out, so we're promoting that to everyone now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Other comments?
I just would like to add that I think this is fantastic, too, and it makes perfect sense to me to sort of integrate more the city and the schools. So in the library realm, and I wanted to ask you about the registration. So you say it's opt-in, and is it during the actual registration of school? It's in the same online or paper documents?
Yes, I actually have an example here. This is what parents would see when they're registering their child at Mesa Public Schools. And this is the language that they would use. We're just, it hasn't rolled out quite yet, but this is on the Mesa Public School side. And from that dropdown menu, you just have the ability to say yes or no that you'd like your child to have a library card.
Great, that's fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. I'll just add my, obviously, everyone is very supportive of this. We are proud of a lot of things about our city. We appreciate a great relationship with all of our school districts, but occasionally things happen that we need to acknowledge, we need to get better at, and we have been told by our school districts that we have very bad third-grade reading scores in the city of Mesa. And so our Education Roundtable, that our council members are so supportive of, has identified literacy as an issue that the city needs to step, get involved with our school districts in, and we need to engage our residents in, you know, just circling the wagons around this reading loss, probably pandemic-related, or probably, for whatever reason, this is a problem that we need to figure out in Mesa, Arizona. So this seems like an important step towards that end, so thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
You bet. Council, any other questions about Monday night's agenda? Mr. Freeman, and then Ms. Spillsbury.
Well, I'm going to pull off 8A and B, take that off the top, so make sure that happens.
Yeah, 8A and B is a zoning case that I know we will have folks showing up to talk about. Anything to say about that? I mean, I think it's maybe all been said. We've been working on this case literally for months, if not years. Well, years. Okay.
I would say years.
Yeah.
But to add to that, I think everything's in order. I think staff has done a really remarkable job with this and outlined all the strategic planning and necessary for this development move forward, so we'll hear more on Monday and make a decision.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of activity at the neighborhood level, so I'm sure we'll see a few people showing up to talk about it.
Well, we have a great, robust neighborhood, good neighborhood policy on this, so it'll be good for it.
I agree. Ms. Spillsbury, did I see your handle?
7A. I have not talked to staff about this, so I should have reached out to you, I guess. But looking at the map, I noticed that it is right next to a current wedding venue that is, there's some neighbors behind it, and I noticed this location also has neighbors even closer to it. So I was just wondering, as we, the request is to turn it into office commercial with a business overlay, or bonus intensity zone overlay, I guess is what biz overlay means. Is there any way to, like, put a restriction that it can't become an event center or a wedding venue, or do we need to worry about that at all?
So Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, a banquet facility would be a permitted use by right in the OC District. What we could do is look at some type of a condition of approval on it, that if the use changes from the office that's being proposed, that the project be required to come back to council for review.
Okay, there's office commercial next to it, and office commercial to the other side of it, and so I just wanted to make sure what we were actually approving here.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we might do that. We might also, as we consider this, we might also consider a development agreement, so we might need to, we'll see, we'll talk after this meeting and see.
I have no idea what their plans are for it. I'm assuming just office space. I mean, that's what most of those former houses have turned into office right there on Southern, but I just wouldn't want there to be another event center that's even closer to houses.
Yeah, normally, we not just do a step, we usually use a development agreement also when we're using a use restriction like that. So we'll talk about it after this meeting, and maybe we'll need to, we'll see if it stays on the agenda or not.
Okay, so you guys will look into that, and then we'll just be notified of what the decision is. Okay, thank you.
All right. Mayor, just a note, item 3A, the applicant has withdrawn that item on that legal license, so that item will be taken off the agenda for Monday.
Okay, great. All right, I know we're going to have a staff presentation later in this meeting on the United Food Bank item.
Yes.
All right. Council, any other questions on Monday night's agenda? All right, thank you. Next item then on our agenda, item 2A, is a presentation to discuss and provide overview of the Planning Division, including the Division's three teams, goals, 2021, 22 accomplishments, and 2022, 23 projects and priorities. Mary, you've been busy right off the bat.
I'm sorry?
You've been busy right off the bat.
I have, and this is my first time driving, so hopefully I'm going to do this right. Usually I have Rachel.
Because you like transit or rail design?
Mayor, Council, thank you so much for the time this morning to talk about the Planning Division work plan for 2023. We wanted to just kind of give you an overview of what the goals of our division are, kind of the overview of the three teams and their responsibilities. Talk about some recent team accomplishments, and then look at what our 2023 work plan looks like moving forward. So as a division, there's a lot of planning, strategic thinking that goes on in all of our teams. And so really what we're doing is we're looking to prepare and maintain our long-range planning and regulatory documents. That includes our general plan, our sub-area plans, all of our corridor plans, any revitalization plans, and any of the zoning and design guidelines and other regulatory documents. We also are responsible for making policy recommendations, whether that's from a project perspective or from a long-range perspective, to City Council, and then to all of the various land use-related boards within the city. So the Board of Adjustments, Design Review Board, Planning and Zoning Board, and the Historic Preservation Board. We look at reviewing the planning cases to help our applicants through the process. We're always trying to find ways to streamline their review process and looking for a path forward for them. We want to negotiate and try to get to a yes. It doesn't always happen, but that really is the goal of the division. We also look to provide excellent customer service. This is important to all of those people who come to our office, who are looking for help, whether it's for a permit to put in a small building or an addition, or if it's someone doing a large-scale project that's bringing hundreds of jobs to the city. We are here to problem solve. It's an opportunity for us to do this both by telephone, in person, and we're really, really focused on customer service. So the three teams in planning are the current planning team. Those are the ones we mostly see here at City Council with the projects. We're strategically looking at those applications that are coming in to make sure that they're aligning with the city vision. We want to ensure compliance with the city's general plan and with all of the different regulations and policies that the city has adopted. We're looking to coordinate our land use strategies with the other departments. Those applications, when they get to you, have been through every department within the city to make sure that they're on board with the recommendation that's being made to City Council. We also have a long-range team, and this team is regularly evaluating our general plan. As you all know, we're in the process of updating the general plan, but as we go through our day-to-day work, we're looking to evaluate that general plan, our zoning ordinance, any other related policies, to see what needs to be updated, to see what maybe isn't working, what needs to be tweaked. We work really closely with the city attorney's office on all of this, because any of those amendments, obviously, coming to City Council consideration. We have to make sure that the city attorney is on board with the things that we're proposing. And then our Historic Preservation Team is here to protect and preserve our historic and cultural assets. It's really looking to provide support and education to the community on the importance of historic preservation here in Mesa. As an overview of some of the work that we do, we look at the customers that we've served. So in 2021, we served a total of about 10,012 customers. In 2022, it went down a little bit, and you can see basically a lot of that decline happened in the fourth quarter, but we still served over 9,500 customers in 2022. In our 2021 applications, you can see here that we again saw a little bit of a dip in 2022, but overall, in 2022, we had about 1,500 applications that were filed, where in 2021, we had a little over 1,400. So we actually saw more applications, although we are seeing that dip coming at the end of last year. Some of the current planning, that short-term project-type planning accomplishments include the Pioneer Crossing, which was a rezone to allow for a mixed-use development for a variety of housing types. We really look to enhance the open space and trail network and create that agretainment area. The Child Crisis Center of Arizona was a rezone for the headquarters. It was almost 30, a little over 37,000 square feet, and we really focused on the unique architecture materials that they were including in their project. Facebook Phase 2, this is a little over 1.5 million square feet on almost 400 acres of the data center buildings. And then the Indicat Mesa, which is 10 industrial buildings, a little over 1.6 million square feet. For the long-range team, we've looked at some process improvements as it relates to public participation and public noticing. We've looked to streamline and simplify some of our review processes. We've also done the zoning code amendment on outdoor eating and temporary use permit, temporary use permits. We were awarded almost $1 million for the TOD, Transit Oriented Development Study, that we're hoping to get initiated soon. And then, as you are all aware, we have started the general plan update. Historic Preservation issued nine certificates of appropriateness last year. They conducted a Historic Preservation Board retreat, which we will do again this fall. And then there is the Historical Fiction Essay Video Contest, which we're actually expanding to all media, all art forms, so students can be as creative as they want as we go through that process. That will happen in May of this year as part of Historic Preservation Month. For long-range planning, the key projects that we'll be working on this year include the general plan update, the TOD grant study. We'll be looking at accessory dwelling units and ways to ensure that they're located in the appropriate areas and the development standards are appropriate for them. We're looking at developing an infill small lot resource guide and text amendments to the code. We want to clean up our subdivision ordinance with some text amendments, and then we're looking on all of our projects to make sure that we've got urban design and place making occurring. For the Historic Preservation Work Plan, again, we have Historic Preservation Month coming up in May. We'll again go through that essay contest with the students. We are looking to re-up our Section 106 programmatic agreement with SHPO so that we're able to do those Section 106 reviews without the state having to participate with that. We're in the process of working on our citywide Historic Preservation Guidelines, and there will be text amendments that go with that. For the Lehigh area, we're looking at a heritage designation that is in process. We'll be bringing that to the Historic Preservation Board for a recommendation within the next few months. And then in the future, we'll look for future historic designations, heritage designations, and landmark designations. Obviously, the current planning team will continue to do, process the applications that come through our customers, our office over on Center Street. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the work plan and where we're going this year.
Thank you, Mary. That was a great state of the planning. It's, sometimes we take for granted all of the things that you're doing, all of the departments, until you line it up and actually look back and see, that was very impressive. I mean, I think any city looking at that would be, it looks more like a decade's worth rather than a year, so it's amazing. Council questions on this?
Hi, Mary. Thanks for a great presentation. On page six, there's the applications by quarter, and I noticed the last quarter of this, of '22, there's no pre-apps. I assume, is that an indication of the slowdown that we're seeing even in the total applications?
So I think that the pre-apps, they may come and go because the applicants, you know, depending on where they are in the process. I'm not sure if that's an indication of where we're going. I don't have the data yet for January in terms of where we are, but we did definitely see a slowdown in the fourth quarter. Not sure where we're going to go with those as we come forward. I think we are seeing a little bit of a slowdown still, but without the numbers, I'm not sure exactly what that looks like.
Yeah, I'm sure interest rate development is really slowing down and holding back, and especially seeing what the economy is going to do as far as recession or not.
Mayor, Council, so help Mary a little bit. What we did last year as part of streamlining the process, we used our pre-application and pre-app, and the preapplications was basically for Board of Adjustment cases. So we realized that we were having duplication of reviews, so we combined them into one process. That's why you're not seeing that specific information.
Thank you. Well, I realize that our building permits and those, our city does, depends on a certain amount of revenue from those building permits and things like that, and it's been, we've had tremendous development over the last few years, and so I know if we're expecting a slowdown in this next year, that would be a consideration for our budget.
Yeah, we're seeing it. We're seeing it.
And the second question is, there was a presentation earlier about vacant lands, how much, you know, how it's zoned and stuff like that. Are we really looking at the land that we have left, the appropriate zoning? What are balances? Do we need to think about encouraging a shift in our different use according to our needs?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, I think that when we, I think the slide you're referring to is the one from the general plan update, where we showed about 15% of the city is still vacant, and that will all be part of that process. And that will all be part of that process as we start to look at what those future land uses would be in those areas.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff. Other questions on this? Ms. Billsbury?
Thank you so much. This is really good information. I didn't know when I got on council that like most of my time would be spent in planning and zoning cases. So we deal with this a lot, right? I, like your long range planning work plan, the, there are certain things on here that I would be very interested to see what you guys are are thinking of doing or whatever. So when you, you know, make changes or or projections or plans for like the ADUs or the infill stuff, like, would that stuff come to council to be approved type of thing or for feedback or how does that, how does the process work?
Mayor, Councilmember Billsbury, all of these, if they are text amendments to the zoning code or any kind of a general plan amendment, that has city council final approval on that. And so depending on the project, there may be a workshop that's needed, or it could just be that we come with a proposal with a text amendment or with a general plan amendment.
Okay. And then obviously, other things that you're working on, like streamlining processes and stuff like that, is just in-house. Like, your department just makes those decisions, and it's not stuff that would come to council necessarily.
Only if it affected somehow the general plan or the zoning code.
Right. Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much. I think this will be really great. I'm excited to see what you guys do.
I just have a question. Can you give us sort of the high level on a couple of these, what it is about it that you're looking into? So for instance, the subdivision ordinance, what?
Yeah, so there's some cleanup items that we've been working on with the city attorney's office over the last maybe six months or so. So we just want to get those those items cleaned up. I can't speak to the specifics on it. Unfortunately, I don't have Rachel here with me today, and she's the one who wrote those. So I apologize for that. But it's mostly cleanup. It's not, there's nothing substantive or dramatic that we're changing on that.
And then the ADUs, just the high level, what are we looking at? Where?
So we want to look at our ADU, our accessory dwelling unit, I'm sorry, Mayor, Council. We want to look at our accessory dwelling units to see, do we have any barriers for them? If we do have barriers, what do those look like? Are there areas where they should be allowed, shouldn't be allowed? How do they fit in with historic neighborhoods? How do they fit in with our other neighborhoods? To make sure that now, if we update these regulations, we're not creating any unforeseen impacts on how they could be placed within our neighborhoods.
So I think the request has been from members of council to consider how we could provide for more opportunity for these to come into certain neighborhoods. But we want to, you know, we want to work through that process. So this is, again, the general plan transit, the TOD grant, that's going to consume most of our time. And what we're trying to show you is that we're also, based on the feedback I've received from council members, we're also going to consider looking at some of these other items, specifically the ADUs and the infill. All those were specific feedback that I've gotten from members of council. So I think on the ADUs, the question was, right now, it's very difficult, or if not prohibited, to allow for those in certain neighborhoods. And so I think what staff's going to do is just kind of bring to council this idea of like, okay, if if we were to allow that, how would that work and how would that impact neighborhoods and which neighborhoods would that be available for? The thing with the challenge we have, and Mary can kind of help me out with this, is the ideas, you know, how we apply this, there's certain parts of Mesa where that might make sense because people are looking for opportunities to have parents or college aid students, whatever, right, live in those, with that, in that home or on the unit, the only unit associated with that. But how does that apply in newer sub, you know, subdivisions of the city too? So we've got to figure out how, when we apply a policy, we have to consider not only the impact it has in an older established neighborhood that may have separated garages or whatever, but how do you make it apply across the whole city? So that's what we're going to try to bring to council. And the way, the process typically is, staff will come up with kind of a draft concept or some ideas. We'll bring that to council first, get some, just to have a white paper, a straw man for you to kind of respond to and and mod, work on that. And then eventually, once we kind of have a, work that out, not in all the detail, but with enough direction from council, then we'll go through the process with PNC and the public hearing process, get all their feedback, and then bring those final drafts back to the council.
I think this is a pretty hot topic nationally. I mean, I see a lot of chatter about it in various states across the country and as it relates as well to addressing the affordable housing. So you'll, that will be included. Okay, great.
Great, thank you. Other questions on this item? Great, thank you. Good job, Mary. Next item on our agenda, item 2B, is a presentation to provide direction on funding for United Food Bank utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funding. Welcome, Mr. Hirschberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good morning. Mark Hirschberg, Deputy City Manager. As many of you know, the United Food Bank was established in 1983, and they have a long history of serving those in our community that are experiencing food insecurity. Today, they serve an area that stretches from the East Valley all the way up to southern Apache and Navajo counties. And through their collaboration with 150 different partner agencies that provide services in helping feed children, families, and seniors, they were able last year to distribute over 49,000 meals daily to those those experiencing food insecurity. I've been fortunate enough in my career with the city to to have experienced a lot of great opportunities and and challenges. But one of the things I'm most proud of was the way our community responded in the partnership we established during the heart of the the pandemic and in the establishment of the Feeding Mesa Program, and the bonds that our two agencies created together through that process. Over that 10-month period of March 2020 through December 2020, when we converted the convention center into a food warehouse and a and a distribution center, we were able to to provide more than 4.25 million pounds of food, serving over 66,000 households. And just to equate that, 1.2 pounds of food equals one meal. To this day, our partnerships, which many of you participate in with those distributions, that partnership continues with the Thanksgiving and Christmas Day distributions. But unfortunately, even as we start to continue to come out of the pandemic, the need still continues. And there's still several people, as you can see on this slide, experiencing food insecurity in our community. As I mentioned, our Thanksgiving Day distribution provided, served 1,847 households and 8,466, 67 individuals. And our Christmas distribution provided meals to 1,603 households and 6,802 individuals. Several of you have volunteered at the Havelina Service Center down by the Maricopa County Service Campus. And there, as the county continues to expand on that campus and move it and centralize some of their services in there, it's restricted the space and the access to this Havelina location. So the United Food Bank is is limited in the space that they can can utilize at their existing facilities to to serve the community. As a nonprofit, as you can imagine, and serving that many people in that wide of an area, they have limited resources to provide both their core services to the community while reimagining and improving their operations to help better serve the community. So we're proposing the use of ARPA funds, which allow us to assist nonprofits in the community affected by by COVID and coming out of the COVID, to help serve the community. So we would like to support their general fund operations, their general operating budget, to five, within an amount of $5 million that'll be distributed over a 36-month period. So what, for every $1 we provide, that's five meals that will help provide 25 million meals to those in need. By supporting the general operations of the United Food Bank, that'll allow them to to redevelop additional real estate to help serve the community with new and improved programming and offerings. And this funding will continue to ensure that as they're going through that process, those in need will continue to be served and have and and receive the food they need for those facing the insecurity. There is a resolution on the council agenda for Monday night, and if you all approve that, we have a contractual agreement between the city and the United Food Bank that's ready and in place to be signed and issued. And as part of our require, of our reporting process to the federal government, we'll measure the success of this program with the total number of emergency food bags distributed, the total inventory on hand and available to help families and individuals' needs, as well as the total pounds of food served. And again, that metric that we look at when total pounds of food served is 1.2 pounds equals one meal. So pretty straightforward there. And again, a great partnership that we have with United Food Bank. Mike Soriano is here, the interim president and CEO of United Food Bank is here. If there's any questions, happy to answer those as well.
Thank you very much, Mark. Councilmember Duff?
So will these funds increase the number of meals served? Or is it just a way to continue to serve the community while they're doing their expansion?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, that's correct. This, the, will not increase. It'll keep them level. It'll replace what's in their general fund budget now and to allow them to continue to provide, and they can move that general, those general fund dollars to their redevelopment or redeployment activities.
We're not adding more to the food supply, but we're adding, allowing them to then spend it on the facility for, and that's critical for them, so.
I guess that kind of goes along with what I was going to ask was, what is our historical funding that we've provided? I mean, is it, it's not been this significant?
Mayor, Councilmember, go forth. No, that is, we have not provided funding in this way. The only thing, to my recollection, is the partnership. We provide the spaces as a, as a, as a partner for those distributions.
We bought two trailers.
We did, and during COVID, with the CARES dollars that we received, we provided funding to not just United Food Bank, but a number of nonprofits in the community during, with our CARES dollars. United Food Bank was one of the larger nonprofits that received funding through that program. And again, but going forward, as we've come out of that and those dollars are gone, the only thing we do is the annual distributions. We provide the space rent free.
Thank you. Mr. Summers?
Find the button. Slide five, you do talk about redeveloping additional real estate to serve the community. That's pretty nebulous. What is it specifically that they're proposing to do with this $5 million?
Mayor, Councilmember Summers, I'd like to invite Mike up to address that directly so I don't speak out of turn for them.
Mayor and council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address your your questions and your consideration of this funding. So we had the opportunity a little over a year ago to purchase and finance partially that purchase of a building that's currently adjacent. It's a facility that's adjacent to our current operation on Nina here in Mesa. And that, that real estate will give us the ability to expand basically the services that we are currently offering to the, both the local community and the entire service area in in the state of Arizona. We envision a scenario where we can partner more closely in this new facility with other human service agencies that already do an outstanding job of things like workforce development, providing health care, and addressing a lot of the root cause, root causes of food insecurity. And the current facility that we're in today, we are, you know, rapidly expanding out of. It doesn't give us the ability, for example, to consolidate any of our volunteer center activities, which is the facility over at Havelina that Mark mentioned, where we've lost the ability to do any sort of in-person food distribution to. So this new real estate will allow us to expand our service offering. It'll allow us to be much more efficient in the way we deliver our services to the community by allowing us to consolidate our volunteer center activities and perhaps even resume in, more regular in-person food distribution in many different ways.
I guess I turned it off. Probably a good idea. And you've accounted for this in your operating budget moving forward, the expanded facilities, the need, the increase in the operational cost for that, because this is basically a one-time, $5 million transfer of federal grants through Mesa to your organization. But after that, there, I don't know that we would anticipate increasing a budget from or pass-throughs because they're inconsistent.
That's, that's correct. You know, we, we understand that by, you know, continuing to expand what we do, we will need to expand the resources that we, you know, secure to do that on an ongoing basis. But we're confident we'll be able to do that. We intend, along with this funding, we intend to pursue a campaign, a formal campaign. We've already been talking to other, you know, funding sources to be able to do that here in the community, and we're very confident that we'll be able to do that on an ongoing basis.
Just, Mayor and council, if you recall, when we first outlined projects to be spent with our per dollar with support, we actually identified a facility for the United Food Bank. But as we went through looking at real estate in different areas to support that old, you know, grocery stores or whatever, we also, and then as they identified the property adjacent to where their current operations is, as we looked at the requirements and the process to how we could spend the, the requirements and regulations on spending dollars on facilities and assets with the ARPA dollars, it just really became very burdensome. And so we really figured out that it was better for us to help them support directly their operations and then let them take those dollars that they otherwise would have been spending, that they currently already have.
Correct.
Allocated for operations and then use that to allocate for this adjacent real estate.
Mayor, council, if I may, real quick, Mike didn't give it enough credit. One of the things that is really of benefit to the community, and he touched on it briefly, was the partnership with the other human service organizations that are out there. And Councilmember Spillsbury is on the board, and I know the board has worked hard on this, reimagining their philosophy and their delivery of services and trying to address the root issues of why people become, have food insecurity, and how can we help prevent that? And I think this alignment of this new campus, if you will, and how it correlates with their existing facilities on Nina will, is, should be of unique interest to the, to the community of, that they're taking that approach and reimagining their delivery model.
Thank you. Ms. Billsbury?
Mr. Brady and Mr. Hirschberg just stole my thunder because those were the two points, no, but those were the two points that I was going to make was about that we originally were looking at $10 million towards a building. And I love that we've figured out a way to do this that really makes sense. And also, I was going to mention that I've had the wonderful opportunity to serve on the board for the last two years, and this is an amazing organization. Like, I think we all have, I think every single one of us has gone out and helped with some of those distributions. I've had an opportunity to volunteer, I don't know, 15 times over the last two years with at Havelina and at the distant, at different distributions. And I love it. It's, they're wonderful people doing a really good thing. And and the point that you made, Mark, that they're actually giving food to so many other organizations and working with other nonprofits that really, I mean, I had no idea until I was involved, that other really great nonprofits that do really good things but need food get it from United Food Bank, you know? And so that's, this is more than just helping like one nonprofit be able to feed people. It's, it's really so much bigger than that. And I think that the way that they procured the building and were able to pay for it, and I mean, it's just, it's been an amazing process to watch and to see how really responsible they are with that money and the funds and and how they treat their donors and just, just everything that's going on there has been so impressive. And so I feel really good about doing this and want to put in my full support on that.
Mr. Freeman?
Thanks, Julie. You just stole my thunder. No, but I think, you know, leveraging these federal dollars and strengthening your organization is critical to Mesa. Mesa has had a long history of supporting our nonprofits in our community, and this just shows our commitment to the nonprofits, especially United Food Bank, because, you know, every one of us eat every day, and some of us have the luxury to do that three times a day, or it depends if you're on a diet, you might be one time a day. But there's others that are struggling out there that need to eat. So I support this fully. So thank you for the big ask and all those behind the board of directors and and making this happen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Brady.
The timeline for the project, is it, you know, I know we have 36 months. Is that enough time to build, build out the new facility? And then what's happening with the Havelina site? Are you all keeping, is that added expansion or added services there with the new site? So just?
So, so, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Haridi, excuse me, the, the lease that we have for the Havelina Service Center runs through the end of calendar 2024. So we intend to keep doing what we're doing there until So we intend to keep doing what we're doing there until we have the ability to consolidate those activities into the new real estate. And, yeah, so we should be able to continue to do everything that we're currently doing in the existing real estate that we're in while we build out the and redevelop the real estate that we've acquired.
Thank you. Well, I'll just, I just want to say thank you. This has been, for the last few years, a project that a lot of staff time, a lot of United Food Bank staff time, a lot of City Mesa staff time, and I think it's gratifying to see that we came to such a good solution as to how to most strategically use the resources that we have to add to this, contribute to this challenge. When the pandemic happened, the first thing that Mr. Brady did was take all of the city staff that couldn't work retail anymore, and we did a needs assessment, and the thing that came back to us as the number one concern was food insecurity, right? And so I think maybe it took a pandemic to kind of open our eyes to the level of the severity of this problem in our community. So I'm glad we learned that lesson, and it's, we relearn it every time we have a holiday food distributor, right?
Exactly.
So I'm very glad that there's going to be some lasting impact, and we've focused, kind of sharpened our focus on what is a serious issue in our community. So thank you so much. This was to provide direction, and I've heard a lot of positive direction.
And it's on your agenda for Monday.
Thank you, that's right. This is on our agenda. So we'll be voting, this will stay on the consent agenda, but unless someone just wants to brag about it.
You might want to.
Yeah, I'm not saying that's a bad idea. All right. Thanks, thanks again for all the work that went into that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item three on our agenda is to acknowledge receipt of meeting minutes of various boards and committees. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ms. Duff and Mr. Haredia. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Item four is current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, I know we've all been busy. Who would like to go first? Mr. Freeman.
I'll beat Ms. Spillsbury or Ms. Duff. Well, yeah, we are. Why not? It's going to be a competitive weekend, obviously, with all the orange or red out here. But, so, I was able to go over and meet with Senator Semina. Amoah hosted a water meeting for all the municipalities, and Mr. Hassert and Mr. Linsen accompanied me over there. But I was able to speak on Mesa water needs to the senator, and it was very informative. There were 13 municipalities all throughout the east to the west valley. And it was ironic that all of our discussion was all similar. All the municipalities are, you know, looking for infrastructure and other financing needs from the federal government and long-term water mobility and augmentation. So she took all that down, and she's putting together a water task force to talk about that. So we look forward to her work with water for all of Arizona, and especially our municipalities. As also, the Mesa Historical Museum had a book fair this past weekend. State of the City, the mayor can talk about his, I attended. There was a landlord seminar, and Mesa has heart venue last night. So I know council, and the mayor's been very busy, and I'm surprised the mayor can even speak this morning. I think he'd have laryngitis after everything. So thank you to everybody for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Ms. Spillsbury.
I also just wanted to mention the State of the City, because I think we all need to just brag about how amazing our city is. I live it and breathe it every day, but then sitting there and watching the presentation and just recognizing the amazing work that so many thousands of people do every day to make our city what it is was just, I just was full of pride, and I just, I loved everything about it, especially the comedic humor that we got from the mayor. So I wish we had a little bit more of that during council meetings, but, like a good soundtrack.
Mayor, a future mayor.
Don't encourage.
I'm restraining myself constantly during this meeting.
Every once in a while, you throw something in there, but I could use more. And then I just wanted to announce or put out there, in case you're not aware, February 25th, besides being I Love Mesa Day, so everyone will be in downtown Mesa anyways, but Alex Boye, there's a Ben Not Break concert, a suicide prevention concert, from 3:00 to 6:00 at the Mesa Convention Center in partnership with Copa Health and our chamber, and it's just so needed in our community. And so if you know any teenagers or young adults or adults that struggle with mental health or want to learn more how to support their loved ones, I encourage you, come to downtown Mesa, do all the fun things, go to the farmer's market and all the stuff going on, and then go to the convention center and see what they have going on over there. A bunch of groups from the Alice Cooper School of Rock will be there performing too before Alex Boye. And if you've never heard of Alex Boye, look him up, and you'll want to come see him, because he, I've never seen anyone with so much energy in my life. It's really fun. So I just encourage you to attend that. That's it for me. Oh, and I'm really, really sad, I just have to say, that I missed the Fire Ops 101 on Monday. So I feel really bad that I missed that. I couldn't make it, but I loved seeing all the pictures. So next time, next time.
You're not taking Ibroh like the citizens.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Ms. Duff.
I will talk about the Fire Ops 101 that you missed, you know? So the mayor, Councilmember Haredia, I think all of us except the two on the, you and Scott.
He was laughing.
We were out there Monday suited up with our turnouts and our helmets and our masks and going through these drills, a burning fire, a burning building, rescuing dummies, CPR, incubating, all kinds of things. I really love and respect our fire department, and it's to a new level, kind of sorted, because they're just like, what are you doing to us? No, I really appreciate the time that it took and all the personnel that were out there to, it was the electives from Mesa, Queen Creek, there's a superstition fire, and to show us what's necessary as far as the processes, the equipment, the teamwork, and the sheer weight of having the stuff on your back, in your arms, and carrying things. I have appreciation to wanting to get better, in better shape, and appreciate all the work that our fire department does for our community. So that was on Monday. That was a half-day of, and another half-day of recovery. Some, on, some other things that I've been up to is, on Saturday, I went to the Mesa Library and did some Valentine cards for our seniors that we delivered on Monday, and I even took home a little package of my mom, and I prepared some more, and I dropped those off yesterday. So that was a fun project. Last night, I attended an NFL 360 screening of a documentary, The Jimmy Ray Project. It's part of the NFL Super Bowl event. It is at the McCenter last night. It was showcasing the history of Black Americans in football and how their problem in the teams, yet in ownership or not ownership, more in the coaching is lacking. And there was a lot of good discussion. I appreciate being able to attend that. I've spent some time, one day on a panel, one day listening, on the virtual reality, augmented reality association for Phoenix that's being put together, and it was at the studios, talking about metaverses, virtual reality, and coming together as association, the workforce that's needed, and all the different industries, including filming. I mean, this is moving well outside of gaming, but into every industry, and how do we create the workforce that's necessary for that? Not only what's coming out of ASU is helpful, but we need the people who are doing the technical parts of it just with a certificate. So there's a lot of opportunity there, being with ASU anchoring a lot of this talk. On Friday, I also went to Cedar Course for a 22 jumps fundraiser for veterans for traumatic brain injury research and methods to treat that. It was very powerful. Appreciate being able to go to that. And I attended, oh, was this Tuesday night? The Residents' Guide to Water. Our sustainability department put on a virtual workshop for everybody to understand what's going on with our water, where our supplies are, how to conserve, things that they can do. There's a Q and A afterwards. I think it was really, people are so hungry for how they can participate in water conservation and understanding our water system. So I want to thank the department, as well as Neighborhood Services, Donna Di Francisco and Tanya Gerard were to the forefront of that. I know they had a team behind them and appreciate their work on that. So that's pretty much, and the State of the City was remarkable, a lot of people are talking about. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just second. That was, the State of the City was a lot of fun. You did a great job, Mayor. I just had no idea of your acting ability. So I am thoroughly impressed. And maybe we should hire Gunter. He could do some choreography for the meetings, you know?
We're already working on next year, so we're writing all this down. Thank you.
And then I just wanted to echo about the Fire Ops 101. I newfound respect, not that it wasn't there before, but certainly for what you do, not just physically, but the emotional and the mental part on the medical calls that you go through. And so thank you. And I enjoyed being there, enjoyed going through it, even though it was very difficult. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Summers.
Next time, can we get him in a Level A hazmat suit? That's a whole new ballgame. Obviously echo everything said, the only thing I would like to add, and I hope I'm not stealing the mayor's thunder again, is to express my appreciation to, for the State of the City address. That was a spectacle. Would not be possible with all the, without the Chamber of Commerce and the, everyone, businesses in Mesa who purchased a table and sponsored that event. So thank you to everybody who has been part of the city all those years and contributed to that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Mr. Haredia.
No, Saturday, there's a Mesa Marathon. I think, Mr. Brady?
Oh, there was, I thought you were saying there's another.
No, no, no. Yes, there was. I just finally recovered. I think, you know, Mr. Brady was in it, and several staff members, City Mesa, you know, very well organized. Unfortunately, I think, you know, somebody passed away after the race, and, but overall, I think that was a really well-organized event. A lot of people were there. I think we, we did a great job. So staff, thank you for everything, for the work, you know, leading up to the event. I know it's a, it's a great endeavor to kind of put up this work, this type of event across the city, right? So it's, it was really well organized. So I want to thank everybody engaged in that and all the runners that participated there. And I echo the State of City, you know, it's, it's the best State of City. I've been to other ones. It's, it doesn't compare to the other cities, State of the City. So, and shout out to the fire department for hosting us this Monday as well. Really learned quite a bit. My arms were sore for two days doing compressions. It just, it was, it is really interesting and eye-opening, some of these pieces that you all have to do, not only for training, but on a day-to-day in helping our residents on their worst day, right? So hopefully, we go back and learn even more as we, you know, lead the city to understand other certain types of services and what we offer. So one, one, one per four years, so. But no, really appreciate that piece, so.
Well, I need my rescue partner next time to.
For sure.
Rescue that.
All right. Thank you. I just want to, I agree with you. The State of the City is a big deal because Mesa, Arizona is a big deal. And so that was fun for, I think, people to see that earlier on Tuesday. It's our annual opportunity to set aside our humility and do a shameless commercial for our city. So, and as, probably as obvious, this was a huge team that came together to make this happen. I can't tell you how talented our Channel 11 folks are. They are, the screen will probably go blank here in a second. Glenn and Lily and Brittany and Rihanna are really world-class, and so the, that's what you saw, was the quality of the production value of that, I think, really took people back. And that was entirely our in-house Channel 11 folks. It did such an amazing job. Also, I, my staff never gets thanked, but I need Melissa Randazzo, Casey Blake, Priscilla Gutierrez, who's being stolen from me by Ms. Duff. Priscilla, we, thank you for, you're not going anywhere, really, but. Thank you so much for, it's humbling to look around and see what a huge team it takes to put something like that on. Also, want to point out, thank you to Governor Hobbs. Thank you to Dr. Crow. I think it's wonderful that the City of Mesa is an entity that, you know, attracts the governor and the president of the largest university on the planet, you know, to come and.
Poor species.
That's right. That's the new phrase from Dr. Crow, is this is the best thing that's happened, that our, biggest thing our species has ever accomplished. So I'll put the Mesa State of the City in that, in that category. And of course, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for filling the room. Hopefully, the fire marshal was nowhere to be seen. Thank you to the fire department for looking the other way. And like I say, we are already working on next year. The point of this is that these things write themselves, because all we do is pay attention to what's going on, and a lot of good stuff frankly makes it to the cutting room floor because there's just too much to fit into one hour. So we'll take on the challenge and start writing that again for next year as well. But again, thank you.
Can I add on that anybody who would like to see it and hasn't seen it, it's, you can see it, find it on YouTube, on the Mesa 11 channel, and mesaleven.com, which will also connect you. And I'm sure it'll probably be posted on social, so it's worth taking, spending the time. It's entertaining as well as informative.
Yeah, hopefully it does well in reruns. Right?
Will there be a standing cut version?
No, no. Hopefully, there's a cut version. The editor's cut would be probably half as long as the one that you saw. All right, so that is our current events and conferences attended. Mr. Brady, what does our future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll see you on Monday, February 13th, for our study session and council meeting.
You know, I want to add that on Monday, and the reason I'm saying this is because I've heard this on the press already, Dr. Biden is coming to the Super Bowl. Unfortunately, she's.
Wearing a different color.
Yeah, she's wearing a different jersey. She's a Philadelphia Eagles fan. And she's going to come to Mesa the following day, and we're going to talk about the Mesa College Promise, but some other great things. It'll, it'll be an opportunity for us to get some national attention and host the First Lady next Monday. That's very exciting. All right, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury and Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.